Good morning and welcome to the Oak Island Planning Board. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I think we have some adjustments to the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chair, if we could move staff reports to right after the approval of the minutes, there's a few things I'd like to cover with the planning board if that's acceptable to everyone.
All in favor? Unanimous. Approval of the minutes from, dang, from April.
I neglected to put them on your last agenda, sorry.
You're keeping us on our toes, that's all.
I'm keeping track of what's outstanding.
Jean, do you have any?
No.
I do not either.
Carrie?
I just had a clarification question for the clerk and for Matt. On page five, where there's discussion about the, I think this was regarding the airport billboard discussion, it seemed like there was a, in what I saw that went to town council, there was a two sign minimum, at least from the text that went to town council. Was that revised back to one, which is what I think the planning board recommended and what town council voted to do? Is that right, Matt? We got that correction made? Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Otherwise, no changes. Jim?
Mr. Simmons, you were not here, so. Mark?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, we accept the April 2024 minutes as presented.
I'm second, sir.
All in favor? Approved. Staff reports.
Morning, everybody. Start off welcoming someone here today. We've got Andy Snead here. For those who don't know, Andy is our new assistant town manager. Really excited to have him here and working with us. One of the departments that he's overseeing is development services and planning, so we just wanted to welcome him, let you guys meet him. He's going to hang out with us for a few minutes, I think, this morning. Let Andy introduce himself if he's willing to, or if not, that's okay, you guys can introduce yourselves later on.
Yeah, nothing like an unscripted speech in front of new people. So, anyway, as Matt said, my name is Andy, Andy Snead. I've been here, this is my third week, really happy to be here. I guess briefly about me, so I retired from NC State in charge of facility services there, I guess three years or so ago, spent the last couple of years at Campbell University, and I'm really happy to be here. Mechanic engineer by trade, also licensed in civil, so public works, public administration, design and construction is what I've done for the last 35 years, and I'm really excited to do it here. So I've been here for 40 or so years, off and on, my family has been here, I've had a house, I guess, here for almost 20 years, so I knew this is where I was coming, I didn't know it was going to be two weeks ago, but that is even better. So, anyway, glad to be here and look forward to working with y'all.
Welcome, Andy. Would you spell your last name?
S-N-E-A-D.
Oh, Snead, I'm sorry.
Need to work on my hearing, I'm sorry.
It didn't come through well in the, in the mic for some reason.
Well, I move around, I have a hard time talking in place. You see, I put my hands in my pockets because I'm kind of an active speaker. So, anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so a couple of things that we've talked about a little bit in the past that I wanted to give you guys a brief review on. The first and one of the most important ones for what we do here at the planning board and in the town in general, I briefed you guys a little bit last month on Senate Bill 382. That is now effective law. The governor's veto was overridden at the General Assembly. At the very end of the bill is this provision that amends North Carolina Section 160D, and it amends it as written here. And I'll break down what this means for us, but it changes the downzoning provisions of the general statute. Previously, downzoning wasn't able to be initiated by a third party, but local government could downzone property. This removes that restriction, also makes it so that we can't initiate, enact, or enforce without meeting those provisions there, and I'll detail what those are for you on the next slide here, so we don't have to look at a big old text block. So what does it mean? Town-initiated downzoning may not be initiated without the written consent of all property owners within the affected district. Everyone has to say, yes, we want this, in order to do it. If we, if the town can't get a response from someone, if we can't contact someone, or if someone says, no, I do not want it, and they own property within that district, we can't initiate it, then you guys can't even start a text amendment in that instance and make a recommendation to town council. In addition to that, downzoning, the definition of downzoning has been expanded. Previously, it included two things, decreasing development density allowed, so, you know, zoning something from R6 to R20, less dense development, that is downzoning. Reducing the permitted uses in a zoning district, that is downzoning. If you're, if you're going from, we allow this in this district, to now we're not going to allow it anymore, that is downzoning. Everybody in, not just the affected property owners, everyone in that district that you're downzoning has to agree. Creating any, basically any nonconformity in nonresidential zoning districts, commercial zoning districts, if you're passing a regulation that would create a nonconforming situation in that commercial zoning district, it's not just the one that the nonconformity is on, everybody in that district, once again, has to provide written consent to the town in order to initiate that. This is not, downzoning is a kind of a misnomer in some ways, because it doesn't just apply to a zoning map amendment, it applies to text amendments as well. So when we amend the table of uses, when we amend supplemental regulations, when we do any of that, if we're creating any of these, any of these across the board for a zoning district, it qualifies now as downzoning. In addition, this general statute is retroactive 180 days. There's lots of jurisdictions out there that have, you know, done big UDO overhauls, that have, you know, amended their ordinances expansively, that have to throw their amendments in the trash, because it violates this new statute, even if they did it five months ago. I was talking with our comprehensive plan consultant on this, and they've got at least three jurisdictions that they've worked with on rewriting their development ordinances, and now they have to start from, start from the beginning again, because they have created some of these situations, so.
Does this impact at all, I don't know that it's zoning, but does this impact at all, like, the house size, or taking away the supplemental, I mean, if someone thought that they could have had a 5,000 square foot house, or what have you, with the supplemental reg, and now they can't, does that get pulled into this?
That's a great, open question right now. You know, there's questions, while it is clear what you can and can't do, I don't know that this has been challenged and examined in court a whole lot, because basically, there's no, you know, before towns can do it. The third bullet, creating a nonconformity in a nonresidential zoning district, wouldn't apply, because that's a residential zoning district. I would contend that it's likely that we haven't reduced the permitted uses in the zoning district, because they're both single-family, and single-family is still allowed, there's just a size restriction on it now, but that's still, it's certainly an open question for debate, yes, sir.
Can you go, can you go back to the legislation language?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, maybe.
Can we also get these sent out? I don't think these were in our packet, but it would be good to have these in our, in the notebook I have, so I can go back and reference it when I need to.
My clicker's not clicking.
Clicker's not clicking.
But forward now, so.
No, my, the reason for my question, I thought it said in nonresidential.
Nonresidential.
So this applies to residential and commercial, or just commercial?
The first two bullets apply to everything. The third bullet about creating a nonconformity only applies to, would only apply to commercial, to nonresidential, so commercial industrial zoning districts. So you could still create a nonconformity in a residential zoning district, but you couldn't decrease the development density or reduce the permitted uses in those zoning districts, but you're free to create a nonconformity.
So in that, I know that we had, and it happened to have been freshly ruminating from our minutes, you know, the whole discussion about the industrial district and the things that we've allowed for within the industrial district, that we really don't want, but we sort of keep them out there, because, does this now give us a little bit more urgency before we ever do establish an industrial district, if one were to get, come before the town? Does this now sort of behoove us to go back and maybe look at some of those permitted uses, that we, I don't believe we would want penal code, you know, I mean penal correction facilities, things like that, that we might want to remove, so that we then don't have this, where we would have a case where we downzoned if we did approve an industrial district somewhere in the town?
Yeah, I mean, you definitely want to establish those rules before that zoning went on the map.
But if, if someone has put in a zoning request, you necessar, you can't necessarily tell us, right? And you can't necessarily share that, if someone's putting in a permit and then potentially doing an application for a zoning change?
Well, that comes to this board for review.
Before the applicant comes to you, or only once the applicant, only once it's been formalized?
I mean, once they, yeah, once they turn in the application, that's when it comes to you. Anybody can come in and talk to me about any zoning issue at any time.
That's my point. So, again, I'm just sort of bringing up this as something that maybe we should move up and look at those things, and figure out, are there bona fide reasons, not just, you know, why we would, may not want some of those permitted uses, or even an industrial zone, so that we don't have this trigger its head, and then we get backdoored into?
Yeah, the, I mean, the, the same situation would apply, though, like, when someone comes in for a zoning map amendment, let's say somebody wanted to zone into the industrial district, this board and town council is looking at every use in that zoning district when you make your recommendation and when you make an approval. So if there are uses in that industrial district that don't make sense for that, you have to take, for that area, you have to take that into account, so. It's kind of a double-edged thing, because if you remove all the uses that you don't want, well, then you can't consider that, those uses, you know, but if they're still in there, you can consider those uses in the appropriateness of the zoning district. I know it's kind of convoluted, but, but yes, I mean, if, if you guys are interested in moving that discussion up, you know, certainly, it makes sense to do it before there's any affected property owners, because if there's no zoning on the map, there's no property owners that we have to get written consent for to change those rules.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that you and vice chair and Matt maybe get together, Andy, whomever is in the, and let's look at, most of them, if we remember, in the industrial district were fine, because they're also allowed in other zone districts as well. There were, I think there were nine, that if I remember that number correctly, you know, that petroleum storage, motor speedway, you know, and motorcycle speedway, penal and correctional facilities, there were things like adult entertainment, there were some certain ones that I felt like we should not have as approved uses. And I'm not forgetting your other points as to why we might want to leave those in, but it sounds like to me, before we have something come up to this board or to the town council, which might then limit our ability to make those changes, having well-thought-out the reasons why we may want to make the changes, because what you had said earlier to us, there need to be bona fide reasons why you don't want those, you just can't willy-nilly decide what you don't do and don't want. So this would give us the time to think through the rationale for what we may not want in certain, in the industrial district, if we decide to leave that industrial district in the table of uses. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not rehashing that, I'm not going down a rabbit hole, I'm just, you know, making sure we don't fall victim of not being prepared if something were to come before us, and being a little more deliberate on that.
And my, my, one of my points in bringing this to you guys is one that you need to know what the state law says about what we can and can't do, but it also, I mean, this requires us to take a different strategy for how we want to see the town change and grow over the years.
Right.
You can't just adopt a blanket rule for a zoning district that would, you know, create some of these situations without jumping through a whole bunch of hoops. So we really need to think about, you know, how do we get where we want to go in the end with this constraint on it? It's not impossible, but it is difficult, and it requires us to kind of change how, you know, people have done zoning for the last, you know, 100 years of the state of North Carolina, basically. Jean, I think you had your hand up there.
But if you take something out, just like, you were talking about a speedway, if we take it out.
Of the table of uses.
Of the table of uses altogether, and a speedway comes in and wants to put it somewhere, if it's not listed, that does not automatically mean it's not.
Yeah, you'd have to create a list of prohibited uses that are prohibited throughout the town, and list it there, be specific about it.
Okay, but if it's not prohibited.
If it's not prohibited and it's not in the table, then we have to find the next analogous thing, yes, sir, that's right.
And the good thing of all this, and I hate to, this might mean we have to be a lot more strategic and almost think four moves down the chessboard than just, you know, one move at a time, where we're going to find ourselves blocked in by pawns, you know what I mean? So I think this makes our work a little more fun, because we've really got to now gain theory some of this, but.
Going to have to be creative, yes, sir.
If we're up for that game, you know.
Like, when we made all the tree changes, is that going to, is this going to affect that?
No, that's, that's prior to the 180, anything you did prior to the 180 days.
I couldn't remember when it got approved.
So our sign overlay districts, those changes you made there, those were done in March at town council, so they, they made it in before the 180 day change.
I just couldn't remember what we did prior to.
The only thing that, you know, might be debated is what Mr. Gilmore brought up, the, the house size thing, because that was within the last 180 days that that change was made. But once again, my contention is that they're both, we didn't reduce the number of uses, because they're both single-family uses, right? It's just, the net effect was that the size of the single-family use was reduced.
But now, all the work we did on the.
We're briefing council on the table of uses and supplemental regulations.
Yeah, but all of that is.
Not all of it, but a good chunk.
And even then, when they do, they look back 180 days, right?
Yeah, that's right. But we're, we're briefing council on how this affects the table of uses and the supplemental regulations as well. There, there's still some things that this planning board recommended that are A-OK to do, no problem, but there's, there's quite a few that would be affected by this, yes, sir.
And then this is just town-initiated, what if a private citizen comes in?
Private citizen was already prohibited, that was the previous prohibition, was a private citizen couldn't downzone property, so like, you're, if you have property, and this has happened a few times, you know, say you own property and your next, you have plans to develop it, and your next-door neighbor says, well, I don't want them to do that, I'm going to request the town to zone them from, you know, residential to conservation, so they can't build anything on it. That's been prohibited by the state for, for many years now, just to, but what this does is now expands that to local governments as well, not just towns, counties as well,
Text amendments as well?
Yes, sir, text amendments, text amendments and map amendments.
Are there, are there any areas that you, just in, I know this is relatively new, and you've got to digest this yourself, like you said, and some of it will even get tested, and then you'll come back and redigest, eat it again. Are there any that, and you don't have to answer now to me, but if there are some that jump out at you that you have particular concern about, I don't know whether those can get either escalated, so, you know.
In terms of the.
In terms of anything that we've already done on the UDO, that we think, wow, okay, that one might, might, you know, get flagged or something like that, other than house size?
Yeah, I've done an initial review of our, the recommendations for the table of uses and supplemental regulations. I believe there were eight changes in the table of uses, and about 20 supplemental regulations. The supplemental regulations, the hang-up there was that, you know, we looked at several uses that already exist in the town, and some of the regulations that this board recommended would create a nonconformity in a nonresidential zoning district, and so therefore cannot be blanketly adopted like that, without the consent of everybody in the zoning district that it would apply to, so.
Are you going to bring that back to us, so that we know what?
We're going to bring it to council to let them know that with Senate Bill 382, you know, we'd caution, you know, maybe, because the stuff that's not affected, you know, let's go ahead and adopt that, you know, where there's not a problem with it. If they want to, you know, recommend that some of those other things come back to the planning board or something else, then we can definitely, we can make that there, but, yeah. But I just finished up my review in the last couple of days, so I haven't had the chance to actually have that review with council yet, but we'll make sure they're well-informed prior to adoption.
And was this SB 832, is that right?
Senate Bill 382, yes, ma'am.
382.
382.
Got it.
This was at the very end of our hurricane relief bill, several hundred pages, well, 120, 130 pages, and this was on the very last page of it. And no one, no one knew of its existence until it was introduced into the House, I believe, on November 19th, was when it was passed the first time, and no local jurisdictions knew about this provision prior to that. It just wasn't public, it wasn't out there for us to, you know, usually if there's something that's a problem, we'd try to, you know, see if council wants to do a resolution in opposition or something like that. This passed, the, this, the veto was overridden the day after the last council meeting, so there wasn't even time for us to get that prepared and done.
In the new House and Senate, are there super majorities? Because there are currently, but in the new, do you know if, after the elections, if it stayed?
I don't know, off the top of my head, no, sir.
The Senate is a super majority?
Yeah, the House has always been the one that teeters.
The House, according, if you listen to some people talk, is a working super majority.
A working?
So they seem, they seem to think they have a couple on the other side that's going to vote, and there's probably a guy in Durham, but.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, that's a fun thing for us to have talked about today. My clicker's still not working.
The last one, map?
Yeah.
Again, you may have said this, so to change our current zoning map is the same?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think Mike's coming out to give me some assistance here.
Is moving from commercial to industrial, is that a downzone, or?
Potentially, if you're going from, if there's permitted uses in the commercial district that aren't allowed in the other district that you're asking for.
But ours is sort of reverse. The industrial actually allowed for uses that weren't in the commercial?
Yeah, but if there's any use that's allowed, if there's, you know, one use in the commercial that's not allowed in the industrial.
Thank you.
Downzoning, yes, sir.
It's interesting that, I was just scrolling through the bill, actually, it's the very last page of 132 pages.
So there's 1,582 bill, omnibus bills.
It's called Subpart 3K Local Government.
Yes, ma'am.
That was inserted at the very end.
Yes, ma'am. There, there has been some, you know, we don't ever fully know what the legislature's going to do, there's been some talk about, you know, is there a technical correction in here that needs to be made, or are there further changes that need to be made to clarify this? Because a lot of what, what, some of what was in that bill was kind of targeted towards western states that are rebuilding after Helene, so there's been some thought that maybe this was intended to provide relief for, for those people who are trying to rebuild and not have to, you know, kind of streamline things for them, but in making this change, it was not specific to certain counties, and it was stuck in 160D, which is a statewide law, so it's a statewide effect. But we'll see, and in the meantime, we'll, like I said, we'll continue moving along.
And so just to summarize, Matt, you, you see eight areas within the table of uses and supplemental regs that we suggested to town council that they're reviewing, where we may have risk associated with these changes, is that correct?
Yeah, after my first review.
And 20, you said there were 20?
I counted 20 supplemental regulations, yes, sir.
SUPs.
Yep. Okay. I'm not going to read through all this, but I did want to remind you guys about the recent changes this year to on-premise advertising, which is on-premise signs. I'll kind of summarize this, but there's quite a lengthy section of 160D that was amended this year that, that covers this. We've talked about this some, but just as a brief reminder, the new section 160D 912.1 allows nonconforming on-premise signage to be replaced or moved on-site, as long as the sign area is not enlarged and it meets the requirements of the ordinance when the sign was established. In addition to this, the burden of proof that the sign was legally permitted is shifted from the property owner to the town. So typically, when someone comes in and claims that they have illegal nonconformity, that's what you call like an affirmative defense, they have to come in and prove that they are illegal nonconformity. This, for this specific issue, on-premise sign, it shifts that burden to the town, so now the town has to prove that the sign was not legally permitted, instead of them proving that it was, instead of the applicant proving that it was legally permitted, which can be difficult in a well-developed, older jurisdiction. In addition, they may be replaced within two years of removal or destruction, so if you come in at one year and 364 days and apply for your permit to replace your nonconforming sign, I got to say, yes, sir, you can do it. In addition, should the town require removal of nonconforming signs, let's say we pass rules that required these signs to be removed and replaced with a conforming sign, we have to pay monetary compensation. Monetary compensation is defined in the statute as the cost of the existing sign and the cost of the replacement sign, which is, it's fun that they gave us that burden, and that's all to say that, not that signage is important, not that signage rules in the town are important, but, you know, once again, passing a blanket rule for signage going forward, we don't know what kind of effect it's going to be, because this option for property owners is included in the state statute. Now, if, if we pass a rule that says, okay, your sign can only be, you know, 10 feet tall, and they've got a 15-foot sign, they can, one, move it on the site, as long as it, as long as it doesn't enlarge the sign face or encroach on the setbacks that were in place when the sign was built, not the new setbacks, the setbacks when it was permitted. You know, if it gets torn down, or if it blows down in a storm, they, they could, you know, wait a year and a half before replacing it and put the same sign back up. So those issues are important, but it does limit kind of the effect that we might see with sign regulations, especially in a town that has a somewhat older commercial corridor like we have here on the island especially.
I'm curious, has Hallie gotten any feedback from the Business Advisory Committee on what they're, I mean, our, because I know signage has been an issue with businesses, not being able to do signs. I mean, are we going to see a flux of signs go up, or is it always going to be limited to what was, if there was no sign there for the past two years?
Yeah.
Then they can't now come up and use that ordinance?
Then they can't go back.
So it's a two-year window, okay?
Yes, sir, that's right.
Does she have any sense as to whether that's going to really impact us at all?
I haven't had that specific conversation with her, I have briefed her on this statute, but I don't know that she's gotten anything that she's reported back to me. You know, typically, in my experience, a lot of business owners are in favor of more signs and more signage, so I could, I could see this having, you know, a positive reception from some business owners who either want to keep their sign, or, you know, expand sign regulation in some other way.
So, Matt, does, does the town staff feel that you have adequate records to know, since the burden of proof is now shifted to you, to know whether that sign was compliant or not?
That's, that's a great question. We have quite a bit of aerial photography data, even, we have pretty high resolution from the county dating back to 1989, so you can usually tell what's there, but as far as, you know, hey, what was the square footage of the area of the sign face, you're not going to see that on aerial photography. Google Maps, so it actually helps out a lot, because the street view sometimes goes back many years, so we can see if that sign's changed over the years in some way, but I mean, it is tough for us to, you know, say, hey, you know, the sign was illegally permitted, and now we've got to prove it in some way, that's a high burden to meet, for sure.
I mean, at a minimum, we could document or photograph.
Yeah, we could do a sign inventory, yeah.
At least today. At least today. And then see, you know, because that would start a new two-year, if we can't go back any further. If we could, then it would obviously be able to move that two-year sliding.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I got to hold this a certain way to get going, apparently. All right, Ms. McCullough sent in a question about North Carolina workforce housing initiatives. So I did want to give you guys kind of a brief overview of some of these programs that are out there, just kind of a high-level review. There are several programs that usually get funded and re-incentivized every year that the state sets up for, to try to get workforce housing development underway. They're generally tax breaks and grant programs, you know, to establish a new development or a plan. So they set certain qualifications. If your development meets those qualifications, you may be able to secure some grant funding or a tax credit for things like that. And then there's some, there's usually some funds out there for places that want to develop, you know, workforce housing plans, you know, for adoption, things like that. So these are mostly financial incentives. There's no mandate towards local government zoning at this time for these type of programs. So there's not like a state rule that says that, you know, in residential zoning, you have to allow a certain kind of project. What we can't do is discriminate on an individual project based on their funding source. So if somebody is a workforce development housing project or a low-income tax credit project, we can't use our zoning to say that in a residential district, that type of development is not allowed, just based on the funding source. We got to treat it just like anybody else that was coming in. We can still apply zoning to it. We can still put them through our normal subdivision and site plan review procedures and things like that. But what you can't do is say, you know, hey, in R20, we're not going to allow, you know, workforce housing development. That's a big no-no. And that's generally true about any project. You can't, you know, look at it and see who's applying and, and make your decision based on that. I will note, though, that the General Assembly in the past, last, I think it was not this most recent session, but the session before, did consider some legislation to preempt local zoning regulations for certain development types in all residential zoning districts. But they haven't taken any action this time. That, that bill kind of languished in committee. And I, I was thinking it might come back in this actual, the most recent session that ended where they passed 382, but it hasn't at this time. So definitely something we'll, we'll keep monitoring on. That particular bill, I believe the town did actually pass a resolution in opposition to that one. Once again, it, it didn't make it past committee. It's not unusual. One thing about this, though, you know, we've got several planning efforts going on right now, but, you know, if we, if we have kind of a clear runway for planning efforts, if the town wants to investigate grant funding for like a workforce housing development plan, and that funding's available from the state, definitely something we could consider going forward, you know. We keep a pretty good tab on all the planning grants that are out there, and if one seems to make sense for us, or, you know, if it's called out for in our town policies, then, you know, we'll definitely pursue that. Something to think about.
Yeah, for the rest of the board, the reason for my question was just to make sure there was not any mandates toward our local government planning related to this, right?
Not right now.
And obviously, you know, workforce housing is important. You know, our community needs it. All communities need it. So again, my question was really just to make it public as to whether this affected us from a planning and zoning perspective.
Yep. Not, not, not as of today. I'll say that. I'll put it that way. Who knows what the General Assembly could do tomorrow.
Well, and there are two sides to this coin. There's this side, which is you can't stop it from happening. The other side is how do you actually encourage it to happen? And in what forms would be amenable to the town that would be, you know, be conducive with our community? And those are the things. I don't know if that initiates from the planning board, or if that initiates from just town council, or if it's a, somebody who puts in a permit for something and then, but anyway.
Yeah, so I mean, that, that'd be a great, you know, if that's an open question that the planning board and council wants to answer, that'd be a great reason to pursue some type of workforce housing or low-income housing plan for the town. So we have, you know, developed something that hopefully answers some of those questions about, you know, where it's appropriate, what it needs to look like, things like that. So that's all the staff report I had for you today.
Matt, we can get these sent out to us?
I'll send you all the slides, yes, sir, absolutely.
A question, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, sir.
You brought up the issue on the wellhead overlay. Can you speak to that as far as what we can and?
We've got that on our agenda, on, under Old Business, item number two.
Okay.
I'll cover you guys with that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
And you were?
Move on?
Yeah. Public comment, since there is no one here, we, I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay.
Old Business.
Yes. So this is a continuation of our discussion from last month about priorities for town council to consider. For those of you that regularly attend or watch the council meeting, they had kind of a similar startup discussion at their last meeting. So this is kind of a good opportunity to, you know, get the planning board recommendation in there, since they're potentially going to look at this in, in January. So I did, including your agenda packet, just a couple of things, some update, the, the council of governments' update priorities, as well as some of the park, well, all the parking lot items from the council workshops that we've had over the last couple of months. So very briefly, you're all familiar with this background. In 2223, the Council of Governments audited the Unified Development Ordinance and gave us 10 priority items. The planning board took up item number five from that list, was, was to review the table of uses and activities and definitions. Council also requested that we add in supplemental regulations to that. While we were in the workshop sessions for that item, the table of uses and activities, supplemental regulations and definitions, council had several, you know, kind of tangentially related items that we kind of wrote down and documented in a parking lot for further considerations. There were kind of things that weren't, you know, specific to the item that was in front of them, but, you know, things that were brought up in discussion. All right, there we go. So these are all in your agenda packet. I won't, you know, belabor all of them. The first part of the summary are the 10 colleague recommendations. Number one, clarify the location of accessory structures. Number two, consolidate and clarify setback exceptions. Number three, evaluate parking requirements within the community business zoning district. Number four, update development review processes. Skipped over number five, because you guys just, just did number five. Number six, comprehensively review all signage requirements. Number seven, evaluate positives and negatives for future street dedication and ownership. Number eight, incorporating temporary use and business license requirement into the UDO, as well as Chapter 32 tree preservation provisions. Number nine, consolidate zoning district dimensional requirements. And number 10, review commercial recreation zoning district uses. Moving on into the council parking lot items, just a couple of items here. These are all, once again, in your agenda packet. So looking at private parking lots, parking in commercial districts, hourly hotel rates, other definitions outside the table of uses. Councilman Carter provided a really good set of input on our existing definitions outside of the stuff we looked at under the table of uses. Further changes to the table of uses, kind of what Dural was getting at as well, you know, are there prohibited uses we want to look at for the town?
Do we have hotels that charge hourly rates?
Not that I'm aware of. I think that was an abundance of caution.
I saw that, and I was like...
Item. You know, supplemental regulations for auto repair, consideration for trolley stops on public roads, home offices. Once again, going back to council of government's recommendation, number four, protecting small town character, salvage and junk vehicle business categories, looking at improvement grants, other drive-throughs beyond restaurant drive-throughs, you know, kind of in the same vein as the previous one, home occupations and commercial uses. And then, once again, this kind of calls back to some of the other ones, looking at lists of prohibited uses throughout the town. So I did want to give some feedback on, you know, some things that might, depending on how we do them, run afoul of the Senate bill we just covered, Senate Bill 382. First one, looking at parking requirements in the community business zoning district. You know, if you were to change how those parking lots are required to be configured or things like that, you're likely to create a whole host of nonconformities along that corridor. Doesn't mean we can't evaluate it and try to come up with some, you know, some potential incentives to change the parking situation out there, or expand it in some way. But once again, we have to be careful not to create a nonconforming situation in that area.
Okay, so Matt, let's use that one as a real test on my knowledge.
Sure.
So I understand what might exist out there today, if parking, let's just stay with parking. But let's say we want to make a change. Is there a way that we can make a change that does not make someone who doesn't comply with that a legal nonconforming, but maybe they're just grandfathered? I mean, or something, and I'm, my words are not going to be official, so that you understand the point.
I do, 100%.
So that we're not limited in still trying to iterate towards a better situation, where we're still allowing others to have. And then those, whether we want to offer some type of zoning allowance, or incentives, or something like that, to slowly then get those grandfathered, not legal nonconforming, but get those grandfathered to now adopt the new standard, you know, or the new ordinance?
Yeah.
And just start working on that, that, is that a strategy that would work, or a set of tactics that would work rather on that?
Yeah, you know, I've, I've been, since this came to my attention, I've been kind of in my own head, kind of kicking around, okay, what can we do? You know, how do we, how do we strategize? Certainly, it seems to me the, the clearest way to do it would be to create some type of new zoning district that is voluntary, you know, maybe conditional. So, and then, like you're saying, create incentives to get people interested in that zoning district. And then they're asking for the district at that point, and we kind of figure out, okay, how do we want to set up the regulations to get what the town might want, and what kind of incentives are going to drive them to, to ask for this district? So that the, either redevelopment or new development, you know, gets to where we want to go, and maybe, you know, whatever it ends up being, gives them something in return. Because if, if a individual property owner is coming in and asking for a new zoning district, that doesn't run afoul of the downzoning rules, because they're, it's their individual district, they're asking for it. So they're voluntarily coming into something like that. So certainly a strategy that, that could work. But the, the caveat is, you know, figuring out what it is we want to see, what the problems we're trying to address, and then how do we get people interested in it so that it doesn't just sit there and no one ever applies for it, you know?
So something like CLD, where it might be several blocks of Oak Island Drive, okay? You could create this new zone, CLD 1, making it up. And then if there are three businesses that contain, that are confined within that block, and they all agree to it, you could then do a CLD 1, for example, within a CLD, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it's totally new zoning district. So as long as it's voluntary. Now, it wouldn't have to go through a zoning map amendment process, where it's, you know, in front of planning board for recommendation and council for approval. I couldn't just administratively apply it. But it's certainly a, a way to go, yes, sir.
Well, and the, again, in this, trying to think force, you know, chest moves down, to me, identifying those, and rather than waiting for the three to sort of come to some consensus on their own, and then come to us, and then we approve it, almost to say, we have, if, if certain, if they abide by a certain, we're willing to agree to the, like, almost go ahead and pre-approve that. Now you've got something to go sell to the individual business owners, versus them not necessarily knowing how to navigate that, or even knowing if it would be successful if they did.
Yeah.
You know what I mean?
A hundred percent, yes, sir.
I think, I think, though, as we think about where this came from, going back to when we had Wes here and we were working, I may, I may be the only person on the floor...
Most of us probably weren't on here.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So I'm thinking about where this came from, was if you look at the current parking requirements may restrict future redevelopment and/or changes of use for existing buildings. And the impact desired was to encourage redevelopment and reuse of existing building stock. So in other words, less parking lots, more commercial businesses, right?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
That improve our tax base, help our community, bring services to the community, I believe, was the intention of it. So just for everybody's information, that's where that came from, right? Because we have, I guess, I couldn't recite, Matt, you could tell us what our commercial parking requirements are, but there's a lot of parking lots in the commercial business district, right? There's, there's room for a lot of cars, and not any more buildings, right, that bring services to the community. So I think that was the driver of where this kind of came from, from those days, right?
Well, and I was even thinking, if you then add to those businesses, if you want to build apartments above your, you know, above your business for workforce housing, for inexpensive workforce housing, then are there, are there other things that we can give them? Maybe it's around parking or something like that, where we alleviate some of the requirements? I mean, truth be told, I, I bought a piece of land and really wanted to put a restaurant on it, okay? And I thought it would be a great spot for a restaurant. I can't meet the parking requirements that are needed to make the, you know, and because it's of where it's situated, I've got to have ingress and egress off of that lot. Now, this was not going to be some big fancy, it's just going to be a little, a neat little taco, fish taco kind of a place. And we need more restaurants. My point, though, is the, we, we abandoned it, and because of all the regulations that prohibit you, and there's ample parking all the way around it. But, so I'm just trying to say, that's how we could try and get the town, the businesses to move in a way that's where we want them to move, by giving up some things that today have sort of been a limiting factor in them wanting to make any of those changes.
And as we look at the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, that's under evaluation right now, you know, these types of things, the whole, I don't want to say redesign of the commercial business district, but that's part of that steering plan. So this could all be wrapped into that.
I agree.
Because we, we need to, in, in my personal opinion, create a more walkable community. We don't need to be encouraging people to drive so much, right? And so I hope that that will come forth as part of the land use plan changes, is that we do create a less walkable, or less drivable, more walkable pedestrian-friendly community in that commercial area. It helps the businesses, and it's really good for our community. So I'm, I'm hopeful that we can bring something forward with this.
What is the timeline for them coming back with suggestions, recommendations, sort of vision statements, things like that, from that work that's being done on the Comprehensive Land Use Plan? I guess I could ask our two representatives on that.
The next public engagement opportunity is going to be in the middle of February, where they'll have done some initial work and be asking for more community feedback as well. Then I believe, I don't have the calendar right in front of me, but I believe the next one is in April. So we've got a couple more things where they're going to have worked on some draft things that they've, based on, you know, good planning practices, what they've heard from the steering committee, what they've heard from the community, and then ask for more feedback on, you know, hey, this is what we think we've heard. Are we going in the right direction? You know, are there other changes?
Wheels of government move slowly. But I, I wonder if there aren't concurrent paths that we can take, where when they get far enough along, we don't necessarily need to know what the vision is, but if there are key tenants of, or elements of their vision that we, that are getting sort of solidified, the more feedback they get from the town, you know, from citizens and council and stuff, that then we can sort of understand, so that we can begin to pave a path of changing or recommending changes that then support it, or are ready to be supported when it does sort of get in place, not sort of have it all come together, and then it come to us, and we have ju, ju, just an idea, you know, so that we can have concurrent paths there. I'd love to see change happen sooner, obviously, but go ahead.
So the, the town currently has parking space requirements based off of the business type.
Yes.
And then we have the North Carolina Building Code that requires certain types of parking spaces, then the handicap code also, that gives a percentage for each type of business and so forth. So it's not completely in the town's hands?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
To control how big a parking lot can be or can't be.
Yeah. Well, okay, where those obstacles would be, maybe we can just, again, maybe we just understand those.
Yeah.
Or are there things that we can do where there are amp, there is ample, I mean, if you go to Southport, I think it's a great example, you know, you've got street-side parking. But then you do have parking lots, and the parking lots are there for all of the businesses. So whatever they're doing, we should be, I mean, it shouldn't be that restrictive to where we can't. There are some designated parking lots, you know, that Southport has, but then there are some that are public parking, that you can park there and then use it for walking to businesses that are adjacent to it. So again, just rabbit hole after rabbit hole after rabbit hole, sorry.
It's all good thoughts. It's all good thoughts. Number two, reviewing all signage ordinance requirements and considering modifications. You know, we just talked about the, the issue with the new nonconforming statutes. Now, this wouldn't necessarily, we could still make adjustments, but I'm unsure about the likelihood of us seeing, you know, rapid change when there's state law that basically allows you to keep your sign moving around, reestablish it. You know, businesses and, and business owners are usually wanting to keep or add signage, as I mentioned. Commercial recreation zoning district uses, you know, for, if that turns into potentially removing uses from the commercial recreation zoning district, that's downzoning. So just throwing all that out there. You know, looking at some of the items from the parking lot, you know, private parking lot allowances in the table of uses, if you remove those, that could be considered downzoning. We just talked about parking in commercial districts to some degree. You have to be careful not to create nonconformities if you're going to adjust how it's set up. Hourly rate of hotel rooms, there's, you know, if that's something that's out there now, then you can potentially be considered downzoning by removing that use. More changes to the table of uses, we have to be careful, once again, to not run afoul of downzoning. Prohibitions, I, I think that there's still a likelihood that the town can declare certain uses of property a public nuisance because that's not necessarily a zoning authority, that's more of a police power, and then do a townwide prohibition that way. I don't think that this runs, that Senate Bill 382 preempts us from doing that just because it is not strictly a zoning issue, it's a public nuisance issue. So, but we still, once again, have to be careful about how we structure it. Supplemental regulations for buffer requirements for auto repair, once again, the legal nonconforming issue pops up there. Once again, salvage junk vehicle business category definitions, drive-throughs, not just restaurants and, you know, looping back to one prohibited uses, have to be specific about how we're going about those things. We did take a look and see if there was some things that we could consolidate into one effort, you know, that kind of made sense to just kind of do all at once. One, two, and eight from the COG recommendations, that's looking at accessory locations, consolidating our setback exceptions and reorganizing our setback tables. Some of this is a little bit of quality of life, but you know, we'll also probably, probably be digging into accessory structural locations and setback exceptions while we're going through that. Number two, you know, this is a, a regular issue, home offices, home occupations, commercial uses and residential zoning districts, how do we regulate those? Now, you guys did make some recommendations for home occupations with the supplemental regulations, so some of that work's already been done. I get the sense that there's, you know, maybe some more work to be done. We'll see what council comes back with on that as well. There's a few things that have been addressed partially over the, since the stuff came into place. One, street dedication requirements. DOT required the town to develop some design manual standards for street construction that we've submitted to the DOT, basically to help permitting for some of the crosswalks that the town's pursuing. I don't, I checked in with Scott, I don't know that that's formally been adopted by the town, but it has been used by the town and as I mentioned, submitted to NC DOT. That kind of goes back to the weighing the benefits of private and public streets and how those streets are designed and dedicated. Signage review, this board and council has adopted some incremental sign regulations, off-premise signage regulations on Middleton into 11, also with some reduction in pole size sign addressed in those recent ordinance amendments. And then, as I mentioned just a minute ago, the planning board did recommend some supplemental regulations to council for home occupations to, to give them some options about how they could address that going forward. I went through and kind of just spitballed a few things that I see as potential either current or future challenges. One, street dedication, public versus private streets. Right now, we allow both in subdivisions, there's pros and cons to each, obviously. You know, as, you know, we just saw a major subdivision on the mainland, you know, as those developments come online, it's going to become more important to understand the benefits and the drawbacks of both public and private streets because they are both, they are numerous. Ordinance confusion around setbacks, exceptions, structure placement, that's something we deal with all the time because, you know, we have our setback tables and then at the end of the setback tables is a long list of exceptions, and then there's accessory structure regulations and supplemental regulations. So that's something that we regularly have to, you know, sit down with folks and explain and sometimes among ourselves, explain how those all fit in together. Ambiguity at home occupation requirements, you know, we talked that through when we went through the supplemental regulations. And then once again, parking in the commercial zoning districts on the island, something we, we regularly hear about and, you know, is obviously a sticky problem to address. So that's all I had for you guys today. Certainly, if you want to discuss if there's one or more than one items that you think are priorities, that you'd like to let town council know what you think so we can forward that for their January discussion, so they can take the planning board's feedback. This is the whole thing, is to get council your feedback on what you think are priorities to address, so they can take that into consideration when they do set priorities for the staff and the planning board to work on going forward.
So, so Matt, what, what we're being asked to do then is look at the continuing top 10 and start to address these.
Well, make suggestions to the town councils to which we would prioritize and then let them come back and, okay.
And the, and the parking lot items, you know, I, I would pick from, you know, I wouldn't just limit it to the top 10, I'd include the parking lot items as well. And so what I've tried to do is just kind of give you some initial, you know, thoughts, feedback, you know, what are challenges we see, what are some issues that we'll have to work through as we go through these things to help you kind of discuss and hopefully forward one or more priorities that you think you'd like to recommend to town council so they can set those next month.
So Matt, do you have a recommendation as to looking at these 10 items from a risk standpoint to the town, what you would think would be the priorities? Do you have a feel for that? Any ideas?
One of the, one of the top ones on here, I think, is, you know, certainly an issue, especially as mainland development comes online over the years. And I'll touch on it briefly, I don't have a full, you know, presentation prepared for you, but public versus private streets have, and how those streets are made are tremendous consideration for anywhere that's experiencing growth. Public streets, one, obviously, public access has a benefit to people living in the neighborhoods or visiting those neighborhoods. The town does obviously bear burden of responsibility of maintaining those streets. Private, you know, you lose that public access. And conceptually, the town is not burdened with maintaining those streets. I've been at this a long time and I have seen many neighborhoods with private streets fall into disrepair because the HOA dues don't cover the cost of that maintenance. And then you have potentially several hundred residents in front of town council asking the town to take over those streets and repair them, not just maintain them, but repair deficiencies. And the town is not set up to cover that burden, but it's a very difficult decision.
Have many private streets?
Yeah, so taking over private streets, making them public.
Do we have many private streets?
We have some in Pine Forest, there are some private roads there. And this would really, I believe we have some also in.
That condominium project off of Long Beach Road?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
So it, it's not a huge problem right this second, but what I'm thinking about is, you know, let's say we get, you know, two or three more subdivision developments comes in, what are we going to be looking at in 10, 15 years? Is the town going to have, you know, whole neighborhoods coming in and asking us to take over their streets because the maintenance either wasn't done or wasn't funded properly in the future? I think that's kind of a, a far-thinking thing, but certainly something that if you don't plan for it now, it's going to come back and bite you later on. Ordinance confusion around setbacks, exceptions, structure placement, that happens all the time. We get somebody comes in and has, you know, gets a permit, thinks they're doing everything right. You know, we get out there on the ground and do an inspection and something's messed up with their setbacks, then they're coming in in front of the Board of Adjustment, Reese can probably speak on some, haven't been a Board of Adjustment member, you know, asking for a variance or appealing a staff decision. Anytime we can clean that up and make sure that everybody knows what's happening, it's, it's good not just for property owners, but also neighbors, you know, you know what the rules are, you can easily access them and understand and reduce some confusion for everybody. Home occupation requirement ambiguity, definitely something I hear about quite often, you know, people that are trying to run a small business out of their home, you know, either don't understand what the rules are or the rules are so ambiguous that it allows kind of more than what a rational person might consider a home occupation. And then the parking in the commercial zoning districts, we hear about that quite a bit as well, you know, either not enough parking or, you know, parking that's, you know, designed in a way that's not walkable to get to Carrie's point. You know, we have several parking lot, well, it's generous to call them parking lots, but several parking spaces, Long East Oak Island Drive, that back into a 35 mile an hour speed zone. I can tell you, if you propose that on a new site to DOT right now, they would tell you, no way, that is not happening because it affects walkability, because it affects pedestrian and vehicular safety. You know, you're backing into an active road there, that's, that's not a safe motion to make.
So are changes like that that the DOT may make, are they subject to the same constraints that we are in terms of downzoning?
No.
They're not, okay. And then the other thing is, and I, I may be getting things confused, I know that one of the issues I've heard homeowners raise is, you know, if they're trying to make improvements over a certain amount or whatever, they're limited, but in, in the case of a destruction of a home, fire, storm, what have you, it's been my understanding that when you rebuild your home, you have to bring it up to, if more than 50% of your home is damaged, then you have to bring the home up to the current ordinance or the current requirements, you know, that are in place, not those that might have existed, you know, 30 years ago. So like a bathroom on the ground level on the beachfront?
Oh, yeah.
You know, you, you cannot rebuild that in a, in a, so is that impacted at all by any of that downzoning where, or would they be able to go back because it was allowed when they, when their home was built, they're able to go back and actually build to that standard?
That's not affected by downzoning because what you're talking about is KAMA and flood regulations.
Got it, okay, good, good.
Those are different authorizing statutes. So KAMA and flood regulations are still open for, for amendment and not subject to the downzoning, just because they're different statutory exemptions.
And building codes also, they'd have to pay the new building code.
Yeah, I know, see, this is language to you guys.
Which is something we can definitely, you know, I'm hopeful as the comp plan, you know, chucks along and we get a sense of what's going on. You know, flood damage prevention, flood hazard prevention is something that I'm keenly interested in and the town should be keenly interested in because we have one of the highest numbers of structures in a flood hazard area in the whole state. We're in the top 10, I think we might even be in the top five. So it's something that we should definitely be thinking about, so I'm glad that the downzoning provision shouldn't touch on those flood hazard regulations because they're critically important. Yes, sir.
You skipped over number four.
I could, I could talk about number four a little bit.
Reason for that?
Sure.
Well, I just wanted, because it was on the town council's punch list that said number, COG recommendation number four.
Yeah, and council discussed this a bit at their last meeting, at their last regular meeting, and there seemed to be a consensus that there wasn't much push behind priority number four. That being said, I can speak on it a little bit, just about maybe the intent of it from the COGS perspective, certainly. Currently, and you guys know this because we just had one, you know, a major subdivision, a major site plan comes through, that process goes through the planning board for recommendation and town council for approval. Certainly nothing wrong with that process, right? But it is, it is an administrative approval. You don't have discretionary standards. It's not even a public hearing when it goes to town council, it's a new business item. So there's some tension there between the expectation that since it's happening in a public meeting and it's happening in the public, that the elected officials, the planning board have some say in how that gets developed or how it shows up or how it moves forward. But that's simply not true. Either it meets the ordinance criteria and is entitled to a permit or it does not. So unless the planning board or the town council meeting reveals some deficiency from the ordinance that, that the, you know, project doesn't meet, they don't have really, I mean, you guys are wielding the rubber stamp, as it were, you know? So there's that piece of it that it kind of, you know, certainly for members of the public, it might create an expectation that there's something that the planning board or council could do about a specific project, when that's not necessarily true. You know, if you, if it meets the requirements of the ordinance, they are entitled to that permit, they have to be granted that permit. The other portion of this from the COG perspective is that there's the potential, you know, to have several site plans and subdivisions come in all at once. That can really clog up your agenda, especially if this is happening in public, especially if you're getting a bunch of public feedback about it. You know, the, the amount of effort that the, the boards could potentially spend on this, you know, should the town, should the town growth accelerate, could be tremendous. You know, we could be looking at, you know, several hours added on the meetings to, to review these projects and get them moving forward, when there's obviously town, other town business that's, you know, has discretionary parts about it that might be, you know, better time spent for this board and for town council. So that was kind of the perspective on it, but like I said, at the last council meeting, it just didn't seem like there was very, any really at all, you know, consensus on this being one of the priorities that they would choose to move forward with. So I apologize for, you know, kind of glossing over it.
Well, Matt, thank you because when I read it, I was like, oh, I'm dead against this because I want town council to have to make a say because they were elected.
Absolutely, that's okay.
But if it's just, just like the one we had the other week, it was a rubber stamp. I mean, it was already, in the planned community, it was already everything, but if you don't bring it up, then the public says, oh, you're trying to hide stuff.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's kind of a, it's a shell game, it's like.
And, and there, there's benefits to, to the process that we have now because, let's say, development comes in front of this board, comes in front of town council, and they say, Matt, I don't like how this is designed, or I think this, this, and this is wrong, the development. Okay, we can't stop this development from happening because it's under the rules that exist. If it meets those rules, great. What it can do is trigger council to say, let's investigate changing these rules going forward so that new projects that come in meet what we want to see and meet the criteria that we want to see. So from an informational standpoint, it's beneficial. I think what the COGS worrying about here was the, the process and maybe the expectation that it creates in having this type of process.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But Matt, I think to Gene's point though, from the public perspective, I know when the Big Williamson track came before town council, I mean, there was a lot of give and take between the development team and town council and coming up with some agreement to make some changes, to do some things that they thought were better for the community. So I think there was some benefit.
Well, that was also a zoning map amendment. That was not a preliminary plat or a site plan.
But the point was, I think to Gene's point, it was public, very public.
That's right.
Right? And there was a good exchange between the parties involved, and so I think probably council is prioritizing that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Show the public, let's talk about it, let's make sure everybody understands what's being developed and.
So maybe there is a, I mean, while it's not a priority, and I understand that they're not maybe going to designate this a priority, if there are some things that we can suggest as a planning board that would make this less of a burden if, if it does become sort of a snowball kind of a thing with subdivisions? And a way to make sure that there's still visibility, maybe not all the time and investment, maybe there's something that we can actually suggest that.
Yeah, we had a, in my last job, we had a really great, and still, they still have one, a really great current development map that, so all the, all the approvals were similarly administrative, but they were handled by staff because we had so many going on that, you know, you'd never get out of a council or a planning board meeting if they had to approve everything. But that was a good way to keep the public informed of, okay, what's happening next to me? And, you know, we had the, the site plan on the, online where you could, you know, click on and see how it was going to be designed, see all that information as well. And we did regular, you know, updates, things like that, kept the council and the, the planning board informed. And we did regular, you know, updates, things like that, kept the council and the, the planning board informed. But yeah, I mean, certainly, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing technically wrong with the, the process as it sits right now. I'll put it that way.
Well, Matt, you already have administrative authority on minor subdivisions, right?
Minor subdivisions and minor site plans. Yes, ma'am.
So part of this is already handled administratively?
Yeah, and the site plans technically, you won't see a lot of like the commercial site plans because in order to qualify as a minor, all they have to do is meet the requirements of the ordinance. So the, those are pretty simple to administer on the staff end and they don't come before this board. You guys see site plans when they're in like a planned unit development because I'm required to, to put that through those processes. But if it's just in like a general commercial zoning district, like it's just on a parcel of the straight zone CLD and they can meet all the ordinance requirements, you guys aren't going to see that.
So, so as I listen to what we've all talked about and as we look at these 10, it seems like the priorities and the risks are two, three, seven and nine? Sorry, but.
I would even like put two, three and nine together. Or no, two and nine could go together. Three and seven would be a little bit different. Yes, ma'am. That, those are certainly all things that we deal with challenges every day as staff, so.
Yeah, two, three, just to recap everybody, seven and nine.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Which sort of align with, I think, Matt, what your recommendations were as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Should we go back, Mr. Chairman, should we make a recommendation to council that we'd like to address those areas primarily or on a priority basis? Would that be an action that we would take today?
You could, yes, ma'am, absolutely, yeah.
Let's do that.
Yeah, I haven't thought about them from that perspective of which I find to be more, you know, I, I can certainly identify those four. I might come back next meeting and want to talk about another one.
Well, we'll be here. I can promise you that.
I mean, clearly we've already said these 10 items need to be addressed.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, there's 10 of the 10, which I would go back and say, I'd like for you to, you know, I can certainly support those four. I just didn't want to, I haven't thought about them enough. I didn't know that was the work coming out of here was to identify a priority list, or I would have had that.
And we can, you know, this board, you know, can set agenda items and, you know, initiate text and zoning amendments. So if there's something that we don't catch and we can fit it in and work that as well, that's no problem, yeah.
I'd like to see working on the parking lot and parking requirements first because, you know, setbacks and dimensions and stuff, we're not going to be able to change very much because of the bill. But the parking, it seems like we're all looking to reduce it to create, create more of a walking atmosphere which would reduce impervious surface area, possibly increase vegetation and commercial. So I think I would focus on that, that one first. Because it's going to be reducing rules and regulations, not increasing.
Well, that was one that I felt like input from the comprehensive land use plan and what they're already, you know, because they're taking the feedback, excuse me, they're taking the feedback, ah, sorry.
I think, to Mr. Gilbert's point though, I think it's probably going to be summertime next year before the whole land use plan gets wrapped up and.
Exactly, and my idea was not to wait, but just to get some of that feedback so that if we do prioritize this or we're sort of at least swimming in a similar direction to intersect when that happens. Because the other side of that is, I don't want to say it's a priority and then we sit here and still have to wait till June for them to come back. Know what I mean? Because.
I think this is a priority for you guys that council wants to set for y'all to go ahead and start working on, yes, sir.
So, so, Mr. Chairman, do you want to?
Make a motion to send these items to council.
As our next four priority items? Is that okay, Matt?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and combine what's two and nine into one topic.
Yep. Two, three, seven and nine, which three covers the parking CB, right? Okay.
And then add public versus private roads.
Yes, sir.
That's number seven. It's incorporated in number seven.
Two, three, seven and nine.
Okay. So, do I have a motion?
I'll make said motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Approved. That will be, yes.
Let me ask Matt one question.
Absolutely.
This bill 382, we keep hearing about what's in the works and how it might affect it and everything we're talking about moving forward and how it might affect it. Has anyone from the town reached out to the state to try to get clarification? Was this intended to be statewide? Do they plan on addressing it in some manner? To get a feel for, do we really think this is set in stone or not?
Yeah, I haven't spoken with anybody. I am regularly on the Legislative Committee calls for the North Carolina chapter of the American Planning Association. And in the month that this has been going on, I've been on about five conference calls about it. And there's usually a couple hundred planners on each one, you know? That's, that's way higher than our usual legislative update. So everyone is keenly interested in this. From what I've heard from the Legislative Committee, I don't know how solid it is, but they have heard some feedback that, you know, there may be a technical correction, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be holding my breath for it at this point, no, sir. One of the, one of the issues with the way this bill was passed and addressed is that it wasn't allowed to be amended. Basically, it was presented and passed and it had to be passed in whole due to the type of legislative process that they used. So there wasn't much wiggle room even for towns to come in and say, hey, we don't like this downzoning provision in 160D and the assembly to go, okay, well, we'll pass everything but that and we'll keep working on this downzoning thing. It was kind of an all or nothing. So to that point, maybe there are some folks out there that are taking a deeper look at it and hearing some feedback from their constituents. We've heard that a little bit from the Legislative Committee. But from a staff perspective, we chug along with the rules as they're written and, you know, until they're actually changed, you know, we, we keep right on rocking as, as it stands, so, yeah. I'm hopeful. I'll keep my fingers crossed, but.
So who is our advocate in Raleigh? Is it the Council of Governments?
Well, there's quite a few.
They're talking to, on behalf of the towns. Yeah, and.
Yeah, League of Municipalities, the, from a planning standpoint, the APA chapter advocates for bills. Town, the town itself, you know, obviously, you know, you guys can reach out to your elected officials. They're, they're the ones voted into office. You can contact any of your state representatives at any time and voice your feedback on it. That's totally fine. A lot of times what happens is, like we did with, you know, the previous workforce development bill, towns will, will pass resolutions, then get forwarded to the General Assembly and opposition. This was just one that, you know, due to legislative process, there wasn't even time to, to even get that ball rolling. It's unfortunate, but, you know, definitely if, look up your, if you're interested in seeing this get changed, you can absolutely contact, and citizens as well, you know, contact your state representatives and let them know what you think about it. I, I get the feeling that they're hearing that feedback a lot already.
So, so Matt, I guess, so you'll take these four to the council, that these will be our areas? So what do we want to do as far as?
We need to set some pre-workup for the next meeting. David, you were talking about the commercial district. Can you do some research and bring?
Required parking and stuff according to codes and stuff.
Yes. Harry.
Yeah.
Who? Is that something you have at your fingertips that he wouldn't have to get?
The building code and the ADA stuff?
Or parking requirement?
Yeah, we, we can, we got all the, we got all the code books, so.
Professor's probably had a little experience with that.
Staff had it versus having.
Okay.
I will take the public and private streets and bring some pros and cons. That leaves the ordinance setbacks, exceptions, structures. Can I get two volunteers to look at that?
Well, this one is one I, I would be happy to, I do feel like staff's going to have to pull all of these from the, what's existing today so that we can see where the conflicts are. And then if I, I can take a stab at helping to organize them so that we can see them in grouping or something like that, Matt. Just let me know, just send me what you've got and then I can.
Yeah, I was actually going to suggest that, while research is certainly good, obviously, but I was just going to maybe recommend, Matt, that you bring us back some recommendations as where you think the problem areas are to address these four items and then we start to attack them with some recommendations. Does that, is that agreeable?
Absolutely, yes, ma'am.
Because you certainly have.
He's got access.
To Mr. Gilbert's perspective, let's see where we are and where the risk areas are.
If y'all start diving into those setback exceptions, your head's going to start spinning, so.
So on that, so that would be two and nine, right? Would, we need some information specifically from, from you, Matt.
Sure.
To start to do any real work, I think, right? Is everybody in agreement on that? Yeah, okay.
And I, I can pull some, I can look and see what kind of planning guidance is out there for any of these issues too and, you know, be happy to provide any of that for you as well.
And if you could just email that to us to where we can start digesting before the next meeting?
That's a good idea.
No problem.
Can I ask one question? For my mind, the private versus public roads. Can we require that all subdivisions are public roads? So we can put it in there and that wouldn't be considered downzoning?
Well, no, that's the, that's the infrastructure choice. That's not a, a use choice, whether it's private or public streets. And really, that, that might not even require like, well, I guess it would require UDO update. But no, I don't think that would run into the, well, one, because most of the new streets we see are on residential subdivisions. So even if those streets are non-conforming, that doesn't run afoul of it. It doesn't really reduce the uses of the property. It tells you what the infrastructure you got to put in is and it doesn't decrease the development density. So I don't think that would be an issue, no, sir.
But I mean, do you have a leaning on whether the town council wants to take on the burden?
I don't. I have to start all this decision going forward.
You know, what is the cost of maintaining a road versus what are the requirements of a private road for maintenance? Because if they're never going to maintain it and it just, you know, and that's got to be an HOA or some type of assessed to the individual owners, you know? That's the hard part, yeah.
It is, yes, sir.
Matt, we're talking about town roads versus public roads. What kicks in or how does it work if it becomes a state road? Or how can you push it to be a state road?
That's a great question. Typically, the state won't come in and take over local subdivision streets in a, in a town. They usually do that in counties and they have to meet certain requirements before, I think it has to be either 70 or 80% built out prior to the state coming in and agreeing to maintenance. They've got certain things that they've got to meet. But usually they won't come in and take over a town, a new subdivision street in a town. Because either the town may not have those, you know, they might have different design and, and build criteria and really the state doesn't want to take on more maintenance than they have to for streets and things like that. So I'd have to reach out to somebody at the DOT, but I don't think they really have much appetite for being the, the third party that accepts subdivision streets in the town when we already have like, we have a street department, we accept Powell bill funds for local roads. You know, we, we have several programs in place to maintain streets. I don't think they would be very interested in, in coming in and taking over new subdivision streets for the town.
I've just been curious with, you know, like our existing streets we have here and how the state does maintain a couple of them and all the rest of them are actually.
Yeah, I mean, there, there are some that are owned and maintained by the state and most are owned and maintained by the town, but especially like evacuation routes, so like East Oak Island, portions of Beach, you know, obviously Middleton and Long Beach, you know, those are all state roads.
Only a portion of, of Beach Drive or Oak Island Drive?
Only a portion of Oak Island Drive, yeah. East Oak Island Drive, West Oak Island Drive is, is town maintained, yes, sir. And once again, they usually tie it into those, they're looking for how to get people out in case of emergency and so they want those roads.
So Matt, then on these four areas, are you going to bring us back some risk on all four?
I can, yes, ma'am.
Okay, just to clarify, for the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and start doing some reporting on all of it for you, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
It's no problem. Now, we may get in front of council next month and they say, hey, we want you guys to work on something that y'all didn't pick. So just FYI on that.
Yeah, yeah. It's fair.
And then on the parking lot from town council, are they aware that, you know, 382 which negates many of these, right?
We're going to have the same, we're going to have a similar briefing. I believe Catherine, Catherine's already briefed them quite a bit on it in her discussions with them. But if need be, I'll be happy to present. I'm, I'm going to have to talk about it anyway when we get to the table of uses and supplemental regulation adoption anyway. So we'll have plenty of time to talk that through. And we're going to, we're working on scheduling a workshop, another workshop for them as well. So we have plenty of opportunity for discussion.
So, so how close do you think they are on the table of uses?
I mean, we set up for, they asked for adoption vote in January.
January, okay.
And they, they want some more time to work on and digest the supplemental regulations. But, you know, if we can get a big chunk of it done, let's, let's go ahead and get it done, you know?
So the only thing left is the wellhead protection.
Well, sorry, I lost how to point my clicker.
Launching into this discussion, because this has been ongoing with the county now for a while, is, is this informative, just keeping us up to date as to where they are? Are we able to make, I mean, what is the purpose of this?
I'm going to touch on all that for you.
Thank you. Well, in reading it, I was like, okay, are we giving feedback to this one? Are we, you know, is town council looking for, do what?
I thought Carrie had brought it to our attention.
Okay, good, good. I'm sorry, I apologize.
The last meeting I talked about, or some meeting I talked about how I went, they had, the county had a community meeting on it, the wellhead protection area, and I went just because I thought it was a good learning experience. And one of the takeaways from it was, there were several mayors there from surrounding towns. And the question they asked was, should we be doing anything as municipalities to help protect and be involved in protecting? And the county representatives were like, absolutely. So I didn't know other than to let Matt know that that's sort of what they brought. Now, the frustrating part is that I think the county has not made these revisions yet. So, Matt, but I'll let you go through this and then I'd like to make some comments as well.
Absolutely. My, my thing died again. It's all right. I didn't, I didn't have many slides for this one.
Can we have a five-minute break while Matt tries to get his clicker to work?
Like twice. There's only one.
We can have a five-minute break.
We are back in session. Matt, will you continue on with the wellhead?
Absolutely. So most of this information related to this item is in your packet because there's quite a bit of documentation from the county included in here. Just brief history, the planning board discussed this at the last meeting. Brunswick County planning staff presented information to town council on this item in January of this year. A little bit about Brunswick County's work, they've adopted the district within their jurisdiction and set some prohibited uses within that district. They continue to work on potential performance standards for this. There's a report in your agenda packet that the county had commissioned from April of this year. I, I've checked in with the county a couple of times and have checked in between our last meeting and this one. And they're continuing work on those performance standards. So they, they don't have those officially done or, or ready for dissemination or adoption yet. So it's unfortunate, but that's, that's where we're at. Or that's where the county's at with this. I did want to provide this map and this is included in your agenda packet. These are the wellhead protection overlay areas that the county has identified. And we identified the areas that are in the town that fall within this. The vast majority of the town's jurisdiction that's in the wellhead protection overlay is in the pine forests planned unit development. Further, the majority of that area is single-family residential, which is permitted within the wellhead protection area. And actually quite a bit of it's conservation area. There's actually a really big conservation easement. area. Um, there's actually a really big conservation easement. Um, I know you can't see my pointer, but it's kinda this big green blob right in the middle of the development is actually within a conservation easement, not just, uh, on their master plan, it's conservation. Um, there's a small portion adjacent to it that's zoned R7 that's within the town where that label is, and it's shaded in a little bit. And then a very small corner, uh, on the south side of 211 that is zoned CLD a little bit, that this little kinda section right here is in the town, zoned CLD. So, a lot of it in St. James, St. James's jurisdiction in the county. And what we have is, you know, I would say probably 90, 95% encumbered by the, uh, the pine forest special use permit, um, that's been issued. Um, once again, um, you know, I hate to keep bringing it up, and so it's a downer for us. Uh, we have to be, should the, should the town want to recommend and adopt what the county's already done, which has established this overlay district and restrict uses within that overlay district, uh, we have to be careful about those uses that are permitted now in the CLD that would be taken away with this overlay district because that, you're, you're removing proposed or permitted uses in the district, that's gonna be considered down zoning in that CLD district that allows, looking at their list of prohibited uses, things like automotive repair, gas stations, stuff like that, that's on our table of permitted uses and allowed. If you establish an overlay district to prohibit them in that district, you have downzoned that property at that point, uh, if you're using a zoning tool to do it. So, it is, does put us in a little bit of a tough position.
But again, you don't have to, you could just change that zone for pieces, and again, it's, e, e, even if you kept the permitted use, could you not impose, like, um, restrictions on how to dispose of, or, or how they would need to cordon off disposal, or, or something like that?
You could adopt performance standards as long as they don't, uh, create a nonconformity. So if there's somebody out there that's already operating in a certain way that they wouldn't comply with after those performance standards are adopted, that's when we'd have to go through the exercise of, uh, seeing if all the property owners that are affected will sign off on being introduced into the district at that point.
And because these are, because the 2013, we were just having this conversation, is when the last standards were put in place for this area. It would just be those that have been, that would have been in place and using non-approved uses prior to 13 that you'd...
Uh, so if the town adopted it, let's say, let's say, council, planning board recommended it, council adopted it in January. If there's a, if there's something that would be, if there's something out there now that would be legal nonconforming in that CLD district based on those performance standards, we have to go through the exercise of, of getting all the property owners to agree to the application of that district. And if they don't, or if they don't reply, uh, then we can't initiate it.
Okay, so it sounds like a roadblock, sounds like a stop, do not go. However.
But...
Do we know in the CLD what the, what those, what it's being used for currently, or does it not matter what it's being used for currently because it's zoned, even if you don't have a gas station, for example?
Yeah.
You still can't impose this that would then prohibit a gas station?
But, it's a two-part answer to that. One, for the prohibited uses that are currently allowed in the CLD, the answer to your question is yes, it is a roadblock, because it doesn't matter if it's out there now. If you're reducing the number of permitted uses in that zoning district, then that qualifies as down zoning. For the uses that are there, what we'd have to worry about is adopting standards that would create illegal nonconformity. So we actually have two things to worry about. One, creating nonconformities, and two, restricting uses. Um, there are several, there's a, a few uses in the county's adopted prohibited use list that are allowed in the CLD now. Um, so it would stop us from, the, the down zoning provision would stop us from prohibiting that based on zoning. Uh, as far as whether there would be nonconformities created by the performance standards, I don't know what performance standards the county's got rolling on right now. I've asked them for what they're working on, but I don't think they're ready for dissemination yet, so I can't really say, oh, well, this use that's out here right now would be nonconforming.
But this sort of goes to Mr. Spicer's question earlier, um, and that is, was it intentional that they would do this for an area like this that feeds an aquifer?
Yeah.
That has a greater public good? Was that the intention of this, or were they just sort of up here not looking at those unintended consequences of not being able to, you know, especially after all the, you know, forever chemicals that we're being, that are impacting our area at large?
Uh, I think that's a great question, and I think it's probably an unintended consequence, but it is a consequence nonetheless. You know, the rules weren't written to take these things into consideration, whether it's, you know, whether you're taking into consideration a public health safety thing or, or not, it was...
Okay, so then to, so now, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna get, get to the end of my thinking here. So then, wouldn't you, would it be the league of municipalities that would take this and then put forth that as a clarification to say, you passed this state law, however, in instances where aquifers and other things are being negatively impacted, can we allow for?
Yeah.
These things to be changed in those designated areas?
Yeah. So, it could be a, it could be anybody. It could be a member of the general assembly who is made aware of these impacts that wasn't thinking about it. It could be the league of municipalities coming in advocating for those changes. That, that type of change could, could come from anybody who gets the ear of a, a member of our general assembly.
So then, would, is it the town council? Is it you? Is it someone that sees, okay, within our permitted uses, we would have an issue with being able to govern this, and therefore, is it, who is it that then proactively reaches out to the league of municipalities that says, hey?
Yeah.
There are these permitted uses that we have that now we can't change, that are in this aquifer, and that could lead to contamination and our inability to comply with, you know, the standards being set by the, the county, or that may be in place by the county, and therefore, will you take that forward? Who, who does that, or?
Well, private citizens could do it. Um, staff would do it in the direction of town council. Town council could adopt a resolution, you know, in, in support of some change like that. Um, so there's, unfortunately, there's not one good answer for you, Mr. Gilbert. It kinda takes a collective effort. Um, but, but we would carry that forward at the request of, of town council if that was the direction they wanted to give us. Um, but, yeah.
Then, can we, as a board, ask Matt to identify those uses that are already permitted within the CLD and to bring that to the attention of town council and say that the planning board would recommend that we do notify the league of, you know, so that, at least in this area, we are allowed to make changes that are in compliance or that still continue to protect the?
Yeah.
You know, okay, all right.
So currently, we just have the pine forest area and the area that's R7 that is controlled by the town. Is there any other?
And that little bit of CLD to the south.
Left corner, right.
Okay, and then the little corner there.
Yeah. And the CLD is frankly, the, the problem because, when it comes to establishing this district, because some of those uses that the county prohibited in adopting this district are allowed in the CLD. So if we were to mirror exactly what the county did, we'd be downzoning that property at that point.
Right.
Yeah.
I think, I think one of the things that's important, if you kinda look at, I think it's page 19, gives some really good statistics about this, right, that, that made, was an awareness education for me, right, was, you know, of this whole wellhead protection area, Oak Island is nineteen, over 19% of it, right? So, it looks like not a lot, but on a percentage basis, it's relevant, right?
Absolutely.
It's relevant. And, and the things, in, as I read through this and made some notes, I, I wasn't just concerned about commercial and CLD. I mean, um, one of the, several of the contamination risks that were listed in here.
Farming and...
Had to do with stormwater management ponds, um, large parking lots, more, more impervious surface, private wells, billboard footings, which was shocking to me. I was like, what?
Good thing we prohibited them out there.
And then, you know, of course, the PFAS, right?
Mm-hmm.
As that we've all been concerned about. So, all these things can come about even through residential development. And so, I, I don't want us to jump ahead to some recommendation to council, other than to say, um, to Mr. Gilbert's point, that reference, um, 382, maybe there should be some environmental exception areas to that. And I think that's a fantastic way to start.
100%, right.
Now, whether we do anything within town council, that may be, or, uh, the town of Oak Island, that may be different. I'm just wondering, as I read through this and we look at the pine forest, and does this include the phase two that was approved recently?
Yes, ma'am. So, everything.
The far right?
Everything, uh, if you can look on the big screen, turn around real quick, just briefly, uh, everything kinda from this line here north is phase two. This kinda section down here is phase one.
So my question was gonna be today, within all of that that's already approved.
Mm-hmm.
Do we feel with respect to stormwater and, and restrictions on private wells, because people dig private wells for irrigation and different things, right? I, I was just curious as to whether or not, considering these things that could happen in a residential area, are we protected? I mean, have we done the right things with respect to protecting and not contaminating our water source?
Yeah. Um, and I'll, he's obviously not here, but I'll speak on our, the benefits of our stormwater administrator, Bryce, who's not, who's, if anybody's met, uh, hasn't met him, he's a, a great guy and extremely knowledgeable about all this, and has been really working hard to address a lot of stormwater issues across town, both with, uh, you know, not just stormwater runoff, but new development as well. Um, we actually had a lunch and learn with contractors on Monday, establishing a lot of our, uh, you know, standard design criteria for stabilization for stormwater on sites. Um, so it is something that we're actively working on all the time, yes ma'am. Um, and, uh, I do feel like we're, he's kinda getting his ducks in a row with some things that, uh, like, like standard design drawings that we can give to contractors to let them know, hey, this is how it's supposed to be done. Uh, I do feel like we're making positive progress, excuse me, you know, on that issue, yes ma'am.
To add something, though, to, um, your point, let's all keep in mind, it could be in this far right-hand example up here, there could be a farm that gets established and they could use chemicals that compli, it's not like those chemicals stay in that area. They actually impact the entire, so while we might only be a certain popular, you know, we could impact the whole, or someone over here could impact the whole. So to me, our zoning, you know, is one issue, but we wanna make sure that we preserve whatever is to the environmental protections, you know, maybe that's the way it gets addressed to town council and then gets on to the league of nations, or whomever.
Yeah.
That gives it the most weight for clarification. Um, but it's just, I mean, I'm sorry, it's groundwater, it's, it's our drinking water, it's, you know, I don't know how you wanna play with this one and, and be passive, so.
Well, and if you look on page 37, um, there, of course, you know, I think the county, the, um, DEQ has already assessed like seven of these will, uh, wells at risk of contamination of the 14, or how many there are. Um, so, I, I think it's a relevant thing to think about, uh, not sitting here today saying we need to send something specific to council, but I, I just wanted to create awareness around it. One of the things I thought was interesting was I think these, this aquifer and these wells provide wa, water to like 12,000 residents, right, within this specific area. But our population is expected to expand to like 35,000 people service on these wells. And if you think about that, I also read in here somewhere that during summer demand, um, there's about 5 million gallons pulled out of these aquifers every day during peak summer demand, and the maximum that's allowed is 6 million, right, as they are currently designed. So what that will drive to is we deplete this aquifer is more water coming out of the Cape Fear for Oak Island. So, these are things we should just all be aware of, and that's why I wanted to bring it forward. Again, I, I totally support Mr. Gilbert's, um, commentary about at least sending something to council, that we send something to Raleigh asking for some help, relief from 382 related to things like wellhead protection areas. It's very important. And as to whether we do anything relative to, um, Oak Island, we would have to have directive, I guess, of the town council to make any of such actions. But I just wanted us to all be educated as we look at all that growth in the pine forest area and how many residents are out there. And Matt, are, is there stormwater, um, management ponds within, um, that development? Seems like there are, right?
In pine forest? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, any, any new development has to meet stormwater regulations. When you do a, a big phase of new development, you typically see, uh, like a stormwater pond or low-impact style development practices. It's a little bit different than what you see here on the island where we have like the underground chambers, because those are individual houses. When you do a big development, you do it on the basis of the whole development and, and treat that stormwater.
Very helpful.
Yeah.
Does that close out, that's part of the conversation now?
Hmm?
Are we closed out on the, or do we wanna send a request to council?
I, I personally would like to see, ask council whether they would like to direct us in any area in terms of the UDO with respect to the wellhead protection area. They can say no, they can say yes, here's what we recommend, but I, I, that would be my request.
Yeah.
Talk, address it with Raleigh and, and 382, and then what would you like, county, town council, what would you like us to do if you feel something is needed with respect to the wellhead protection area and relevant to, to Oak Island?
And to me, I, I think at a minimum, we just make the motion that the planning board supports our town council, again, forming a statement or putting a statement or a position to, um, the state to allow for environmental carve-outs, um, related to, whether it's SB382 or whatup, whatever. I feel like, I feel like that's a minimum, and I'd be willing to make that motion, maybe a little bit more coherently, but, um, if it has support.
I, I just feel, I mean, I'm in agreement with, um, asking them, uh, recommending that they do that, but I just feel if it's going forward, it ought to be broader for 382 than just narrowing it down to environmental. I mean, I think we really need to ask that that be, that whole bill be looked at, um, that portion, and was that the intent, and, you know, maybe list some of the ramifications that, uh, we, we are seeing as possibilities.
Well, you could say environmental and other appropriate carve-outs that protect, that provide the adequate protection or, you know, of, um, the aquifers.
I think, I think that you would have less public objection for Raleigh to be specific about requesting environmental protections. They would have, I think they'd be, our elected officials would be much more receptive to making those exceptions to things that all of us care about, Mother Earth. Now, granted, Mr. Spicer, I agree, there are other areas probably that 382 should have carved out, but I think this is kind of a win-win, if you wanna say it, to request to Raleigh, and something that could probably happen, in my view, to support Mr. Gilbert's point. So, I, I would make a motion today that we send forth to town council a request for them to form, um, a notification, a, what do we wanna call it, Matt?
Usually, it's a resolution in opposition.
A resolution to Raleigh with regard to SB382 and making, considering some environmental exceptions, carve-outs, I think is a good word. And also, could they bring back to us some guidance on, relative to the WPA, do they have any actions or recommend any actions from us with that regard?
I'll second that, yeah.
All right. All in favor? Are you good?
Yeah, everybody good. I'm good.
Jean, do you have any reports?
No, just have a wonderful holiday season.
Joel?
I do not, and I'm the same. I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season.
Same. Happy holidays to everybody. Looking forward to 2025.
Mr. Simmons?
Uh, fine. Thank you.
Nothing, just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to each of you.
Merry Christmas.
Well, guys, thank you. It has been a wonderful year. I feel we've accomplished some very good business, and thank you, staff, for your diligent work and support and assistance.
Yeah. Always nice to have a, an engaged board to work with.
So with that.
A motion to adjourn?
Yes.
It's a move.
All, all in favor? Thank you, guys.